... handbook. I know I signed that I received it, you know, in the little packet when you go to the school to register your child. But I don't believe that I actually physically got a new one with the new policies and things because I've been hearing about some kind of not circle time, but it's, I guess, somebody could clue me in on this new policy where they don't necessarily, you didn't get so many tardies, they don't have to, they don't get in trouble right away, they don't get referrals, they get something else where they congregate and talk and, I guess, talk out their issues. I'm all for mediation, I'm good with that if it works. But I am feeling as if it's not working. I feel like we need to work on this. We need to be a lot better with our security at the doors of who's coming in and out. Because now that everybody is aware, and there's so many people aware that this can happen to our kids, that somebody can walk in and do this, I'm afraid that an adult, I'm afraid that a kid who's been expelled or somebody who's disgruntled with another student is going to come in with a weapon, okay? That's my scare. That's what I worry about. So, that's what I wanted to talk to you about. I hope somebody emails me, calls me, whatever, I'll be more than happy to talk to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck, and if, come on up, it's your turn. If anyone else wishes to address the board, please fill out a Goldenrod sheet and get it to our recording secretary, please.
Thank you. I don't take any pleasure in being here tonight. First thing I want to read is from a staff member at Urbana Middle School who was too upset to come tonight and read this. And she asked me to read this. First off, I would like to say that the new administrative staff and the clinical professionals, restorative practice staff that have been hired to serve Urbana Middle School are all fine people and are doing their best at their given jobs. And I do believe that restorative practices will and do work for some of our population. However, the climate at UMS is not good right now. I am not speaking of staff. They've stepped up to the plate for our students. We've had one, possibly two days without fights. The attacks between students are becoming more violent and intentional. The halls between passing periods and the cafeteria do not feel like safe places to be for either students or staff. Not only have students been injured, but staff as well. I don't have the answer, but the need for more assistance is evident. Student escalation continues as the days pass. What are we waiting for? The actual weapons to show up? I feel we need police presence. Those are not my words, but I do agree with them. I've been in the district 28 years, and I've never seen anything like this. And I'm here today because there seems to be a breakdown in communication, or no communication, taking place. I am hearing so many different things about what's happening in central office, about what's happening in the administration in my building, about what's happening in the halls. I can't keep it straight. And I think that that's probably a problem for you as well. So I just wanted to come and tell you about some things that I've seen with my own eyes. Last week, there was a fight. And I got my phone out, and I started to take video, and then I stopped. I said, "This is not the way to do this. You're not supposed to do this." And I stopped. And I said, "Instead, I'm going to write a letter." And I wrote a letter. And I sent it to everyone on the Board of Education. I sent it to Dr. Owen. I sent it to Dr. Weemelt. There are 34 signatures on this letter of teachers and staff in the middle school, ranging from people who have been there one month to 32 years. And we all have the same concern. The middle school is not a safe place right now. I can't stress that enough. We have had three fights today, that I know of. One person in the office had her finger broken, and it may require surgery. Another staff member was breaking up a fight in the eighth grade hallway, and he had to go to the hospital for the second time in two weeks. I also heard of a sixth grade ESA person who got punched in the face, although I cannot confirm that. But I wouldn't deny it, or I wouldn't be surprised if it happened. We also last week had a person who got a broken toe when she went in to try and break up a fight. There's one staff member who says she's afraid to go out in the hall because during the fight, she was picked up, thrown down, and now she's had to have x-rays in which she is waiting for results of, and is taking pain medicine. This is not what a school should be. And I'm not speaking to you as an employee. I'm also speaking to you as a parent. My son goes to the high school. And obviously, I can't speak to that because I don't work there. But from what I've heard, it's just as bad. And I certainly hope someone from the high school can confirm that. I'm not here to point fingers or assign blame. That's someone else's responsibility. But I am here to tell you that these new people that you have hired are working very, very hard. And they are very confused because they don't know what their role is. And they're also very frustrated because students are ignoring them. Students are being disrespectful to them. Those who know me know that I have a rather filthy mouth, yet I have heard people say things, students say things to teachers, that even I wouldn't repeat. We do not have an atmosphere of learning now. We're waiting for the first fight to occur every day. And the other day, there were two that happened before 9:15 in the morning. I don't really know what to say. I am beyond frustrated. I believe that the 35 people who sign this letter are beyond frustrated. And again, those who know me know that my anger sometimes gets the better of me, and I'm trying to control that as well. But you cannot wait any longer to make changes, to either go back to some sort of system we had, or, and I believe this was suggested in the spring, pilot this system at one grade level at the high school and one grade level at the middle school. Then problems that occur can be worked out and contained and not widespread across the building. But rushing into this, you have created a siege mentality among the staff at the middle school. Again, I'm really not sure what to say, other than to just vent, and certainly hope that you believe what I say. And again, I'm going to put this invitation out one more time. Board members, come to the middle school. See what is going on. If you don't believe me, come see for yourself. I'm sure that a radio could be provided for you so that you can listen to everything that happens at this building. It's no longer safe, and you need to do something about it. Mr. Dimmitt, at our first meeting during the year when everyone was gathered together, you admitted when you went up to talk that we've been having some difficulties. And I believe you said that changes were made and that you hope that we make it. Right now, we're not making it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? Tracy, you got it. Before the night's over, do one of these, please.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tracy Welch. I've been at the middle school for 26 years. I'm the restorative practices facilitator at eighth grade. Thank you for cutting my job by two-thirds and only giving me one grade level this year. I will say, though, I've worked harder in the last four weeks than I have when I was in charge of the entire building. We are a building in crisis right now. I love Urbana. I think you all know that. I think I've shown that over 26 years. I love our kids. I don't love what's happening in our building. And I'm not blaming anybody. I don't know what to do to help Dr. Joe, to help our new people, as Chuck referred to, who are trying their hardest. But we need help in this transition. We need help right now in the transition. I meet with students every single day on a regular basis. I had an incredible circle last night until 7:45 at night with mothers, grandmothers, mothers on the phone, and children who want the same thing that we do. And they are asking for our help to give it to them. And I thought we did it. First thing this morning, fight between the same girls. And we thought we had solved it. We did the right thing. We all left crying and sobbing and hugging, and we thought we did the right thing. This morning, we recognized that maybe we didn't solve it. I'm not saying restorative is wrong. I 100% believe that restorative is the route we should go. But we do need some help with it. I don't think our people are trained and ready yet. I think we need to train them immediately in restorative practices. We need to explain to our teachers what our plans and our status is. And when I talk to kids, and I ask them every single time, "What do you guys think of the new system? Do you like it? Is it fair? How do you guys feel about it?" They love it because they say it is fair. We're not suspending kids anymore for ridiculous things. We're not. We're giving them second chances to recoup their mistakes, apologize, and move on. But they are also asking for help with the stronger issues, and that's where we feel our hands are tied. And like Chuck, I'm not blaming anybody. We all went into this wanting to make a change. We did. For our black children, our brown children, and our white children. But right now, we're letting our kids down. And honestly, I am kind of scared about it too. So I ask you guys, please come, consider what we can do in the short term. I think in the long term, our plan is good. I think our plan is right. It's what's right for kids. But when we have four to five to six staff members that are injured because they're doing the right thing, we have kids, we have parents that are calling, we have to do something today so that we can ease this transition. That's what I'm asking for, to help us with the transition. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw Lori motioning. Does that mean someone else is coming forward?
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, my name is Delores Brown. I'm the new principal of Urbana High School. Just wanted to first say good evening and address the board and address some of the concerns that were brought up in regards to the high school. We all know that during this transitional time and this change process, that sometimes it looks messy. Let's be honest about it. But we have to put in the work, and we need time to put in that work. There have been some events that we are not happy about. And we have adapted and changed some of our specifically security measures to make sure that things, situations like that of someone coming to the building is not done in the future. But I definitely want to make sure that parents know that we are taking steps to ensure the safety of all students and staff members. On this coming Friday, I will have a grade level assembly with all students to reiterate our discipline process. Yes, we're not resorting first to our, some of our traditional methods of discipline. We are asking for a more restorative approach, but that doesn't mean that we are doing away with some of those traditional methods. We are blending those traditional methods with the restorative practice. In addition, on next Tuesday, I will have also a town hall meeting for parents of Urbana High School. I want to make sure that parents are aware of it. I know we had some glitches in regards to our technology, but we got that situated and under control now. But I do invite parents to come out on Tuesday of next week to speak with not only myself, but my administrative staff. So their concerns, their questions can be addressed in a more productive manner. And also, we can move forward on the same page, and they understand some of the changes that are going on. I have full belief and commitment to the work that we're doing. I believe that it will work, and that the staff is one of the greatest staff that I've ever been part of. And I know that, again, the work that we're doing, we will see the results that we all are committed to. So I just want to make sure that the board, not only the, and also the parents and the community, know some of the steps that we are doing to ensure, again, the safety of all students and to ensure that this process is transparent, and also that we communicate it in a way that everyone understands and can move forward together. Because we, this is a collective effort. It's just not the administrators who need to understand the process. It's not just the students and the teachers, but also the community, the parents, the board, the district leaders, all of the above. So I want to make sure that I do address some of the concerns, that I hear it, I understand it, and we are going to rectify and move forward in a more positive manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Anyone else this evening?
Oh, sorry.
Hi, my name is Linda Minor. And I was not, you've all received emails from me in the last couple of weeks. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the staff. Our learning environment is only as good as our teaching environment. And I can't imagine of being a staff member, having to go to work every day in this kind of environment. We all know what chronic cortisol does to the body, to the brain. And if I'm a teacher, and I'm trying to be available to my students, to give them all of the needs that they need, be noticing their nuances when they're having a good day, when they're having a bad day in addition to my curriculum, when I myself am at a peak of chronic cortisol, under stress, you're so busy taking care of yourself, how can you be available to these students? And so I'm asking, what are you doing to hold our staff, give them a place that they can take care of themselves, that they can find a place to decompress after a situation, even if they're not in part of a restorative circle? Where can they go to help somebody to hold them? You know, we've done a lot of research, and we know that early childhood is, early intervention is where it's at. And I don't see any, we're teaching all these things about how to be better parents and offering all these classes and whatever, but we're not practicing it for our own staff members. We're expecting them to do something that's unrealistic in this environment. So whether it be an employee assistance program or creating, I don't know, let's think outside of the box. But I know that our staff cannot go on this way. And it's not fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last chance. Got somebody filling out the form?
No, she's just posted.
Oh.
That's Linda.
I didn't recognize. All right. Last call. Thank you, everyone. We will not have an exec meeting after this evening's meeting, my understanding. And so we'll have a motion to approve the agenda would be in order.
So moved second.
Moved in second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. There are no commendations or recognitions tonight, nor policy reviews. We do have administrative reports, so Kelly, you're up.
So it's my pleasure to bring up Kelly Hill, who is the new executive director of the champagne Urbana Schools Foundation. And she brought two of our teachers from Urbana Middle School and Urbana High School who are going to talk about a very exciting project that they've been doing with students in the community. And some of you may have seen it if you live in a certain area just to the east of the high school.
We're watching TV news.
We made the news?
Yeah.
Well, good evening. My name's Kelly Hill. I'm the new executive director here for the champagne Urbana Schools Foundation. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to provide you an update on what's been going on with the foundation and to introduce you to two very special teachers who've been elevating the excellence with our Urbana students through support through our champagne Urbana Schools Foundation grants. Going to quickly just review our mission vision briefly. You all have handouts of these, so I'm not going to spend much time with it. But our goals, our mission is to elevate the excellence that is already going on in our schools, to provide support for our teachers, our students. We're hoping to change lives by partnering with the champagne Urbana Public Schools to provide students and educators with the resources to create the best educational opportunities. Some of these goals and initiatives include supporting, developing and supporting innovative programs. We're looking for innovation, creativity, and new ways of doing things. We want to support the fine and the performing arts. We want to provide support for STEM and STEAM. We want to support health and wellness among students, provide support for early literacy, but this would be preschool all the way through third grade, specific to early literacy, expanding opportunities to acquire ESL and more language competencies for all grade levels, and provide opportunities for career and technical education. This is a quick recap of the programs that we worked with last year. We provided over $58,000 in grants to 126 different teachers in 26 different schools. Now, again, this is across both districts. We awarded $15,000 in scholarship funds to graduating seniors at Urbana Centennial and Central High Schools. And we assisted through our SOS fund, providing support for 122 homeless students in both districts with about $16,000 in funding that was directly given to emergency hotel rooms and clothing. Jada Barber is one of our 10 scholarship recipients from Urbana last year who received funds from the school's foundation last May. And just this fall, on August 23rd, we had our 365 Club breakfast. We hosted a breakfast and invited the community to come and hear from the teachers and students who've been recipients of these grants. We encouraged attendees to pledge a dollar a day to support the mission of elevating the excellence in our schools by investing in our teachers and in our students. And as you know, you'll hear, Urbana District 116 has many amazing teachers and students that we're going to share some more information about tonight. Three years ago, the school's foundation added a collaborative grant category, and these grants are cross-district. They're funded up to $5,000. Projects must support both champagne unit four and Urbana 116, again, encouraging creativity, idea sharing, and innovation. Since 2016, the grant, this particular grant called Creating Sustainable Nutrition Through Education has engaged more than 200 students from Urbana High School and Edison Middle School. The students have joined forces to plant crops, test soil and water samples, build workstations in ponds, construct a compost bin, cultivate chickens, create farm-to-table menus, and generate connections between scientific theory and practice. The project has split time between Fowler Farm, which is a plot of land off of Rising Road, and the Urbana High School gardens adjacent to the high school, and as well as the classroom kitchen in Urbana. Last year, CU School's foundation funding allowed the Urbana gardens to be improved and expanded, and Urbana High School purchased a culinary cart so students could practice demonstration cooking of healthy dishes made from the garden produce. And most recently, the Hedrick House and the Sustainable Agriculture Research and Education Program, SER, which is at the University of Illinois, are also sharing their expertise with teachers and helping us grow connections to the University of Illinois and their professional community. I'd like to invite you to join us on September 20th, which is two days from today. We're having a public open house out at the Fowler Farm complex where we will be showing off many of these things. There's a flyer in your packet, and we invite you to join us. There are some amazing things going on at this outdoor classroom, and I have two of the remarkable teachers that are helping work with that today. In fact, I'd like you to welcome Joni White and Urbana Middle School teacher Katrina Reber to tell you a little bit about another project that's buzzing around in Urbana.
Okay, so our project began in January of this year. I feel like Joni and I balance each other out pretty well. I'm a hobbyist. I've kept these for several years. And she's the scientist who has the access to the high school sustainability club. So we began in January with hive assembly. The students got together every Thursday and put the hives together, which is no small job. It's pretty complicated. We had a student in the art department who painted the hives and made them look really nice for us. And then in the spring, we installed the hive, or we installed the bees in the hive about six blocks away from the high school. So it's been a really exciting project throughout the summer. Kids came and they planted bee-friendly flowers. They learned a lot about pollinators. And we visited the hive about every two weeks just to kind of open it up and to see how they were doing, taught the students how to check for viability of the hive, check to make sure the queen was present or evidence of the queen. So I feel like, you know, we learned a lot together over the summer. Although a honey harvest is looking a little bit unlikely, we, it was a long shot in the first year to have, you know, to hope for a honey harvest. There are still materials that can be collected from the hive. We're hoping to be able to take some beeswax from the hive that Joni can use with her ag industry class this fall. But in addition to that, there's just a lot to be learned from going to the hive and taking observations. So I stopped by with my own children over the weekend, and what we saw was that the worker bees, who are all female, are kicking the male bees out of the hive because the drones, which are the larger ones in the picture here, tend to eat all the honey over the winter. So, so anyway, it's just, it's interesting. Every time you go over there and watch them, you can learn something new. And I know that you took some students over recently and had some experience with that as well.
So I am not the hobbyist. So I took a group of 17 students over there and had them put on the bee suits. Of course, I didn't. So who got stung was me, three times. But I sacrificed myself because I wanted them to have the opportunity to put on the suits and do stuff they would never have dreamed of doing before. In my animal and plant science class and in my ag industry class, I tried to teach sustainability and trying to teach urban ag. And this is definitely urban ag, where they can see that in the middle of the city, we can throw a hive and we can get a product from that. And so I'm very grateful that CU Foundation has given us the opportunity to do projects like this. Besides this project, the project at Fowler Farm, which I also am involved with, with my environmental science class and my sustainability club, we worked to improve that land. And we will be out there on Thursday to show you some of the projects that we've done. But the CU Foundation has been so helpful in providing materials so that we can have these hands-on and not just be stuck in a classroom because most learning can be done through hands-on experience.
So I hope you've enjoyed some of these updates. It's important to see and hear from these teachers and from students who are benefiting from the grants. We obviously support, appreciate the support of both the school board, champagne, and Urbana. And for those of you who are members of the 365 Club, we know that your investment is making a real difference for these teachers and students, and that your generosity is fueling the excellence that you've heard about today. Thanks again for your attention. We hope you'll consider joining us Thursday at the Fowler Farm.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before you get up, any questions of Kelly and team?
Just great job.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. Next up is a follow-up to our six-day enrollment. We asked some questions. And Sam, you've got some, Samuel, you've developed some responses?
All right, so the question that was posed last time was about our dual, dual-language numbers. And so in looking at what we had across the district at the six-day enrollment, just looking at classrooms overall, we saw on average that classroom sizes were a lot lower than they've been in previous years. On average, a little bit lower than 20 per classroom across the elementary. To be exact, it's about 19.55, but you can't divide a kid. So just wanted to give you kind of a perspective of what that's been in previous years. The average has been closer to 20, 22, 23. So across elementary, looking at different buildings, classroom sizes are a lot lower. And then I'm just looking for my notes on the dual-language numbers. And then I'm just looking for my notes on the dual-language numbers. So. So overall, when we looked at the total numbers for Lille, we had 346 students. Of those students, 207 were in our dual-language program. And at Dr. Williams, our overall number of students was 381. And the number that were in our dual-language was 183, far as the splits. And so we've continued to update that as any new enrollment comes along.
Yankee Ridge?
Yankee Ridge enrollment. Currently, we have 11 at our kindergarten for French dual-language. And we have at the first grade, 15.
That's both native French speakers and native English speakers?
Yes.
Total class size is 11?
Yes.
Okay. And 15, so a total of 26.
Yes. And that, is there any other questions that?
Board members, questions?
Well, I just have a, just a clarification. I mean, you mentioned tonight that Dr. Williams enrollment was 381, and the last meeting it was 461.
Sorry.
Is that, and Lille, you said tonight was 346, and last time was 395?
Looking at, looking at two different columns on my charts.
Oh, okay.
So one is just dual-language, and the other number, you can forget that, that was a projection. So when we went through and did the counts, we were trying to project what the overall number might be. And so I was just reading it off of the projection sheet based on, because the information's in two different places.
Got you.
So the actual number for dual-language at Lille, the total is 207, and DPW is 183.
And the overall enrollment numbers are closer to the ones you gave us on the 4th of September?
Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
We were using projections for initial assignments for TAs.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Dr. Bynum? All right, thank you. Excuse me. Next is school improvement plan updates.
So we're going to start with Wiley, Dr. Jennifer Heinhorst, who is our new principal at Wiley Elementary School. She'll be giving an overview of Wiley's school improvement plan and the goals for this year. Are you going to bring team members up and introduce them, or?
No, I'm.
Introduce them where they're sitting?
I'm asking the board how.
There we go.
First, I want to thank the board for inviting me to present our school improvement plan this evening, and I want to also acknowledge the Wiley teachers and parents that are in the audience tonight. I think we have 10 here, and so scale of 1 to 10, 10's the best, so we're really excited with our 10 Wiley families and teachers tonight. So this is presenting you the Wiley School Improvement Plan. I also want to invite all of you board members to come to Wiley to see what great things are happening at Wiley. We're really proud of the progress we've made so far, and it's only going to continue to get better. I'm sorry, I'm a Mac user, so I'm on a totally different platform. So I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay. This picture was taken at Open House by a parent, and I thought that was appropriate. It was our first night getting together in Wiley, of which overall staff is about, we're over 60% new this year. And so the parents have the family and visitors parking sign. So just, we are talking about our new beginnings at Wiley. Just to give you the demographics from last year, 70% of our students at Wiley are low-income, and 67% are minority, to get a picture of what our student population is. When you come into Wiley right now, the cross hallway, you will see all the pictures of all our students. We have a kindergarten community sign, first-grade bulletin board, and so celebrating that all of us are part of the Wiley community. This is all of the staff at Wiley that are hired by USD 116, and it takes all of us to make the gains that we are striving for this year. And this is a smaller subset of the school improvement team, and you guys do have this handout as well. So we can't do our work without all the support structures that are in place. And so what you're seeing here is a list of all the different support structures that the district provides to us here at Wiley. So not only teachers, staff, and parents are part of our support structure, but the district funding, our curriculum, our Urbana Education Association, Parent Teacher Association, all these things are in place to help us achieve our goals at Wiley, and each one plays an important part in our success. These are the overview of our three goal areas. Goal one, restorative practice and equity in discipline data. Goal two, student literacy excellence and achievement. And goal three, positive relationships, engagement, and safety for students, staff, families, and community. So goal one, restorative practice and racial equity in student discipline. Our overall goal is the use of restorative practice and racial equity practices to decrease racial disparity in student discipline data, with the end goal reflecting a student risk ratio of 1.0. In just a minute, I'll explain the student risk ratio to you. Supporting this goal is the use of critically responsive teaching, social-emotional learning, and trauma-informed practices. So a risk ratio, this is something that comes out of PBIS and SWISS data. When you're entering your discipline data into the system, there's a, one measure called a risk ratio. It represents the likelihood of the outcome for one group in relation to a comparison group. Risk ratios are calculated by dividing the risk index of the group of interest by the risk index of a comparison group. A risk ratio of 1.0 shows that the risk for the two groups is equal, whereas a risk ratio greater than 1.0 is indicative of over-representation, and the risk ratio less than 1.0 is indicative of under-representation. So I'm going to give you our current statistics, and that'll make more sense. So our desire is, in the future, students will have a risk ratio of all subgroups of 1.0. Students will experience increased feelings of physical and emotional safety, and students will know that race is not a predictor of their likelihood of receiving a discipline referral, and that students will use self-regulation and pro-social skills. So based on discipline data from last year, these are the risk ratios. So if race does not predict at all whether or not you're going to receive a discipline referral, it should be 1.0 across the board. So you can see that for our African-American students, it's 1.51. That means just by virtue of race, it's a predictor of getting referrals. You can see biracial is also above 1.0, and that white is below 1.0. So our goal is to have that 1.0. Race does not, is not a predictor. So here are all of our equity-focused actions. I'm not going to read through all of them, but you have these in front of you, and these are all equally important. And I just want you to know that we have staff meetings every week. I meet with all of my staff once a week as well in what we call principal collaboration, and they also have grade-level collaboration. So a lot of communication happening, as well as these other focused actions, which we will be assessing our progress throughout the year. Goal two is student literacy excellence and achievement. All students with significant gains for the lowest-tier students will improve their oral reading and comprehension. We want 80% of the students in the school and subgroups, that they will read at or above grade level based on Fanta's and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System and Ames Webb Reading Data. So our desired state is that students will, 80% of them, will be reading at or above grade level. They will be able to identify with their own culture and race and available text, teacher lessons, curriculum choice, and school display imagery. And students will participate in their own goal-setting and progress monitoring by discussing current academic levels and individual growth strategies. Currently, we have 50% of our students at grade level. So we're shooting for that 30% increase, and we're going to work hard to make that happen. Here are our equity-focused actions that support the goal, and these are the different actions that we'll be monitoring and assessing our progress. Our goal three is positive relationships, engagement, and safety in the Wiley community. Our goal is to facilitate and maintain positive relationships, engagement, and safety in a way that Wiley community members, students, staff, families, and others feel accepted, respected, and safe, both physically and emotionally. Just a little side note here, the research I've been doing for the past three years with Dr. Dorothy Espillage is all focused on physical and emotional safety. And so it is an area where I have a great deal of understanding, and we're working really hard on that emotionally safe feeling. And so in the desired state in the future, we want students to feel accepted, safe, and respected at Wiley, be greeted by staff members and other students upon arrival and with beginning their school day, experience behavior-specific affirmations of individual strengths and skills from staff daily, and interact with peers and staff in ways that display kindness, empathy, compassion, and care. Here's a list of our equity-focused actions, and I think one that we are already doing quite well is that we set the goal this summer that every staff member will give eight weekly positive, have eight weekly positive interactions with parents. So that means myself included, every staff member. You have to reach out eight times in the week to do some type of a positive conversation. It could be a postcard, it could be a dojo message, it could be an email. And so we are really excited that this is what's happening. And that is our school improvement plan at Wiley Elementary School. Any questions?
Questions for Dr. Heinhorst.
I'm just glad that you're using Dorothy Espillage because she does great presentations. I've visited some of her classes when she was adjunct professor at the U of I, and she believes in equity and how a person humanitarily converses with others. So I think that's good, that you're starting with some of her concepts at the elementary level.
Thank you.
Just a quick. Maggie?
Thank you. And I appreciate the list of school support structures that you kind of outlined, because it's good to see that all on one page. Could you just say just another word or two about how both the restorative practices and instructional coaches work at Wiley?
Okay, so restorative practices. We have been in conversations with Elaine, and Elaine is going to be working with our staff twice a month, giving us professional development. We also are going to have more intensive training with Elaine. We're going to do 20 hours' worth of training for those who want to be a part of the implementation team. And so right now, we are, Wiley had a great interest last year, and it just didn't get off the ground. And so that's one of the commitments I made to Wiley, is that we would get the training and that we would get the restorative practice information and circles and all the different things that go along with it as part of tools for us. Instructional coaches, instructional coaches are split between two different buildings, and so both of my instructional coaches are also shared with another building, and they work directly with teachers. So I really don't direct the instructional coaches. The instructional coaches are invited by teachers to work in their classrooms. What I do is encourage teachers to get on the calendar with the instructional coaches.
Great, that helps, thank you.
Anyone else? We'd offer the same comment that I've offered before on these school improvement plans. This is your first one, so you get a bye this time. But we see all these school improvement plans, and then we never get a report back on what progress is made towards the goals. And so I would hope that when you come back next year, that you would be able to cite back to these goals and be able to provide progress that you're moving towards. You touched on it in one place. We talked about 50% being at the reading grade level, and your goal is 80. So next year, I hope that you'll be able to come back and say you're at 80 would be fantastic.
Me too.
But if you're at 70, that's fine. Let us know you're at 70, and you've got 10% left to go. But unless these are measurable, it's not to you, but to everybody in the room that works at Unit 116. All of these school improvement plans are just so much fluff unless there's something that backs them up where there's real progress being made. And sometimes we see school improvement plans that come back year after year after year after year with the same goals, same lit talk, and no informing us of progress being made.
Well, I look forward to coming back and sharing the progress. And just so you know, there's much more detail involved in our school improvement plan that actually has the specific events and how we're going to assess it, and I'm more than happy to share that as well. There's far more detail than just this.
As I indicated, it's your first one, so you get a bye this time.
Yeah, it's okay.
But I've, and I've been starting to make those comments at all those school improvement presentations. So for the next two that are coming up, consider yourself so informed. And some of you have been here before, so I'm looking forward to hearing all about the progress that's being made. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Ms. Chris Bowles, who is the principal of Urbana Early Childhood School.
Hi, everyone. So I am Chris Bowles. I'm the principal of Urbana Early Childhood School. I apologize if you don't have the paper copy of this in front of you. That was my oversight. I didn't get it to Lori in time, but I'll be glad to provide those via paper or email and whichever way you want, directly after the meeting. So this is our leadership team at Urbana Early Childhood School. Myself, LaSonia Reed, the assistant principal, several classroom teachers, our instructional coach, family coordinators, bilingual staff, and Seth Carper, who's our child and family support specialist. It's written into the grant as a mental health specialist, but we felt that was not a family-friendly nor descriptive term for exactly what he does. So otherwise, we have London Neely, Francina Wright, Katie Madigan, who's our, one of our speech-language therapists, Nellie Akala, and Lily Jimenez. So our equity vision statement here in our district is there before you, and the UECS mission statement is also there, and we see that they, we believe that they align very well, that our mission is to make sure that all students feel inclusively welcome and families become empowered for their personal, social, and educational success, building positive attitudes in a multicultural, inclusive society. So we, we are working very hard to make sure that our mission statement works closely with the equity vision statement in the district and that our plan supports both of those. So here's a short review of 2017-18. And I can go into certainly more detail because I do have all the data. But last year, much of our action plan was implemented to embed family cultural practices into our curriculum to increase our family engagement. Because family engagement, research shows particularly at the early childhood level, is indicative of student success. So by reaching families where they are, building their culture into our classroom, and starting with what children know and uncomfortable and are comfortable with, can help use that culturally relevant information to help with their growth. So we spent a lot of time talking with families. What do you do at bedtime? What do you do, what are your practices at home? And what are the things that you do around dinner and storytime and bedtime? So that we could start with that foundation and make sure those things were embedded into the classroom as a place to start with our teaching. So we're going to continue that this year. And we're going to, our goals are to increase the supports for our non-English native speakers, increase fidelity with behavior data collection to lead to more data-informed decision-making, and to increase that family engagement. Family engagement is one of those goals that comes up over and over again in our school improvement plan year after year because once again, we feel that that is a key to student success and that teacher and family connection. And we really want families to become, have their first positive experience in Urbana School District at the early childhood level so that they can continue with that positive experience through their students' career here in the Urbana School District. So our school data and targets. So we are going to measure our family engagement attendance for, of course, all students. Our baseline from last year is that we had an average of 20 families in the, in attendance for every event that we have. And we have lots and lots of events throughout the month, typically five, six, seven every month. It's not unusual for staff to be at the school two or three evenings a week. So we want to increase our family attendance to 35% for each event, which is a 42% increase that we're looking at. English language development for all of our dual-language learners. The baseline is we have an average of 75 students and we want to increase their ELD by one level on our ESL report card. So we really want to see their language development move up to that 80, for an 80% increase. And our behavior referrals for all of our students. So while our teachers know our students very, very well, and that starts with that very intensive interview that we do with families upon the screening process when they come in, what we found was that when we looked back at the behavior data, teachers could tell us what was happening and they knew what was happening. And we had a, we had a picture, but it was more anecdotal. And what we really want to do is make sure that the data that we have in our hand is actually measurable and more, more hard data frankly, to make sure that we could look at it and disaggregate it in a way that could be more subjective, objective, not so subjective. So our target is that 85% of our students will be successful at tier one and basically meet that pyramid, that model, that pyramid model. And that 10 to 15% will be successful at tier two and 3 to 5% will be successful with supports at the tier three level, meaning that we'll have 100% increase basically to make sure that our data is reflective of what's actually happening in our classrooms. Our school improvement goals and action plans. So our current state is that despite the frequent, varied, and numerous activity opportunities that we provide for our families, right now, less than 10% of our families are actually attending our events. And we certainly want to increase that. And we have tried for a number of ways over the years. Just so you know, we survey families. What are you interested in? How, what do you want to see? What time of day, what days of the week, where? And we've gone out into the community to try to reach to our families and we've invited them in. We've provided, we always, we always provide childcare and food at every event. That's a given. And we have translators and we, we're working really hard to try to reach the families that, that are not yet engaged in the schools. So our evidence of successful outcomes are going to, are those sign-in sheets. We ask families to sign in. And we also have an exit sheet with families when they leave. Tell us what you liked about tonight or this event today. What would you like us to see do differently? What would you like to hear and learn and engage in the next time? And we actually, and last year, we really looked through those and used those to plan the next events to try to reach our families. And we will continue to do that, but we really want to look for more ways to make that happen. And we're going to do that and I'll show you how. So the second improvement goal is to reach those non-English native Spanish speakers and provide materials and resources in the classrooms for them. So once again, as I mentioned, we try to reach those families and those students where they're at so that we can use their knowledge, their personal knowledge to make growth. And what we have found is in our classrooms, while we have a wide variety of materials and resources for children, not all of them have access to their native language materials. And we don't have supports for all of the languages that are spoken in our school. Typically, we have between 11 and 18 languages in our school every year. And some of those are not common languages in our community. Some of them are from very specific regions of the world. And so we are going to work very hard to try to bring more materials and toys and playthings and things that, with which children are familiar so that we can continue to help them with their language acquisition, starting with their native language. And as I mentioned, our third goal was to be consistent with our data collection on student behavior. So this year is our first year at early childhood of using the SWISS program. In the past, we've used spreadsheets and data sheets to try to see how we're doing. But PBIS uses a SWISS system, which will help disaggregate the data in all kinds of ways. So this, we are just now, for the first time at early childhood, accessing that system. And that has helped because as we talk and train teachers more about collecting data with fidelity and being reliable, the system's going to help us have very structured ways to do that and, and help guide that. So our plan, what you'll see on the left-hand side are the individuals and the groups and the teams that are working on our professional development plan. So to address the behavior goal, we have, we are working on conscious discipline. You can, that's the second one there. We have monthly meetings where we're going to review the conscious discipline webinars. We have books for everyone. A lot of our students come to us. Conscious discipline addresses trauma, trauma and behavior that comes from trauma. And so a lot of, so that's what we're working on to help teachers and staff members understand that sometimes that behavior comes from a place where the student is struggling already, even at the age of three and four. And so how can we address that behavior in a way that's going to help support them in that social-emotional place that they are? So we will be watching webinars on a monthly basis. And at our, we have a block of time over our lunch. Teachers will be engaged in discussion, reading books, and following up on that. We'll also, as I said, take data through the PBIS. We're doing some very specific training at our staff meetings. And we have two PBIS meetings, first and second Friday of every month. That, and then on the second and third Tuesday of every month, the discussions and the conversations that happen with our PBIS meetings will show up at the staff meetings. So we make sure that all the staff are informed of what's discussed and how things are going to happen. We will also be looking at culturally responsive teaching. Our school improvement team is going to make sure that that happens on a monthly base through our staff development days, our collaboration lunch hours, webinars, book studies, and discussions. Because once again, we want that equity piece there for all students. And we will be also looking at family and student engagement. So we have collaborated with the CU Early Partnership. We have a number, more than 18, community partners that we're working with and that we are going to be bringing in to try to reach families in all kinds of ways. And so HECS is part of that, CU Early is part of that. Bright Starts with the Junior League of Champaign-Urbana is our huge part of that. And so we're going to continue those collaborations. And U of I Extension Office is providing all kinds of nutrition classes and bringing things in. So we're going to continue to work with them as well. And that's, that is our plan. And of course, these are just some of the reasons that we do it. I thought this would be a great way to end. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Peggy?
Thanks, Chris. I, I know the new full-time program's only been in operation for a few weeks. So, you know, clearly it wasn't part of your long range. You didn't have as much time to think about goals for it. But it, can you give us even a brief update on how it's going and any goals that you have that might be separate from what you just shared for the standard program?
So yes, so our full-day program's been at Martin Luther King for just a month now. And we've worked very hard. The Martin Luther King staff has been very welcoming, very, very welcoming. And Ms. Lou has also worked collaboratively with us so that we are sharing resources and looking for things to do. We already have a long waiting list of families who are looking for full-day support, but unfortunately, they're on a waiting list trying. And the students, what we have seen already is that the students who last year in a half-day program were struggling, struggling for all kinds of reasons, seem to be settling in a full day. They seem more comfortable, more confident. It's providing a support system that they may not have had last year. More transitions are often difficult for three- and four-year-olds. So having fewer transitions in a full-day program seems to be very supportive for them. So our goal, so just so you know, we received word recently that our, the state will be coming in to monitor our full-day program. So we're getting a monitoring visit right away this year, which means that we have to get to an excellent level very quickly. And so we're looking at that and working very hard. So our improvement plans right now are to make sure that we put that program in well, very quickly. And also that we are embedded into the culture at King and continue to work collaboratively. One of, we had our first collaboration meeting, pre-K staff met, collaborated with the kindergarten staff yesterday after school to start talking about those pre-K to kindergarten transitions. It's so good to be in a school where kindergarten is right there so that we can start talking about what our teachers going in to see what kindergarten looks like early in the school year so that we can make sure we're addressing those things that kindergarten teachers believe make for strong students. And they're going to come in and, and observe pre-K and get to know our students so that that, those transitions can be as smooth as possible with that social-emotional support, academic support. And we're very excited to make that happen. So we just had that first meeting last evening and we're going to continue to work towards. So our goal is that, our goal is to make sure those kids transition into kindergarten in a very positive way and that those early childhood families feel comfortable with their kids going into kindergarten into a school they already know. And do well on our monitoring visit. We're, we're all about that.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Jan?
Thank you for your presentation. And something that John had said previously about Wiley, about the follow-up. Could we have follow-up information next year to see how, since you've gone full-time? I'm really interested to know how well they transition to kindergarten since they've already been exposed to a full-day of schooling. You know, I mean, especially if some kids have come not from early childhood but other daycare centers that are only part-time. You know, full-time kindergarten can be really scary. And I know from kindergarten teachers, they've told me that it takes a good month, almost two months sometimes, to get those kids fully transitioned and off of their naps and all that kind of stuff. So could you bring that information to us whenever you come for a follow-up?
Actually, I think that follow-up is one of the things that we're required to provide to the state.
Oh, okay.
So we will have that data for you.
Wonderful. Excited to hear about it. Thank you.
One of the things that we're planning is actually having the principals come back in the spring. One of the reasons, if you've noticed, we're trying to get as many in as close to the start of the school year as possible is to come back in the spring and do those follow-ups then so that you have same-year data rather than having to remember, oh, that's what the plan was from last year. So that's kind of our, our new model for this year.
Good. This is a little bit off-topic, but not, we, we kind of moved in that direction. I was upset at the stats that the state put out about kindergarten readiness, citing that only, I think it was less than 20% of Urbana students were kindergarten-ready when they went into kindergarten. And I think that we run a better program than that. I know we run a better program than that in the school district. I also know that the Head Start program rates a far greater percentage of their students being kindergarten-ready. You've talked to us before about the fact that, and between, between the probably 80 students in Head Start that go into kindergarten and the 200 or so that go into kindergarten from your program, that's a significant percentage. And that doesn't count all the private preschools in town that also work on. And what's your, did you see the same stats I did?
I did. And I think there's a number, I think there are a number of things that are contributing to that. And this is just my opinion. There, I can't, I'm not speaking from research or anything. But part of it is the kid's assessment is fairly new. It's actually very new to most teachers who are implementing it and following through. They've all been trained. But I think that you, learning the new assessment system and knowing how to put it in place and knowing how to read it well is one of the things that, that's going to need to be looked at. Is, does that play any part of it? And also remember, we had almost 100 children on our waiting list last year as well. So these are children that we knew qualified for our program. And yet, as far as we knew, most of them were with Kith and Ken or getting no services at all. So, and those are children, those are just the ones we've screened. So we also know there are other children out there we were unable to screen. So I think there is still a large percentage of children in the Urbana School District area that are not getting preschool. And I think that.
But it's certainly not only 16% entering our kindergarten classes being quote-unquote kindergarten-ready. I just, I just have a hard time.
And that was just one assessment system they were using for that data.
That's why I was asking you. I'm, I'm, I don't have a problem with our, as a matter of fact, I think our program does exceedingly well. I have a problem with the people that were gathering those statistics and trying to put that out as, as reality.
I think it was the kid's assessment system they were using. And it's, like I said, it's fairly new and I think it's just one, one angle to look at.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah. So are we next on Dolores? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Up next is Ms. Dolores Lloyd from Thomas Paine. And yeah, I will just add to what Chris said, just so that, you know, the KIDS, K-I-D-S, assessment is what that report was based on. It is brand-new in terms of being implemented statewide. And so the report that Mr. Dimon is referring to is the first time that state-level data's been collected and reported on for kids. It is not a, an assessment that has, well, that has a lot of years behind it of implementation here. I think that as we get more years behind it of implementation, we will probably see some more consistency across the board, better results overall. But it's also the first time that our kindergartners have been assessed. I think it's on 14 different measures, three different times during the year. And so it's quite a bit of assessment that's being done and a shift for some of our kindergarten teachers. Ms. Lloyd, take it away.
Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to our Thomas Paine. Red, green. Okay, good. So thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present our Thomas Paine School Improvement Plan to you today. I just want to share some of the highlights and some wonderful things that are going on at Thomas Paine. So this identifies the members of So this identifies the members of our school improvement team. We have several teachers, specialists on the team. My fourth-grade teacher, Casey Sanders. Caitlin D. Haven, which is one of our special ed teacher. A new member to our staff, Scott Blank, which is one of our third-grade teachers. Jackie Martin, who is also one of our FACE team leaders. She's a fifth-grade teacher at Thomas Paine. Elena Knott, who is our literacy interventionist. And our instructional coaches, both Tara and Carla have participated as well. Diane Richardson has sat in and supported us as well at Thomas Paine assisting with our school improvement plan and our goals. And two parents have recently joined the team, and that's Suzanne Compass and Tanisha, I'm sorry, Tanisha King-Taylor. Our mission at Thomas Paine is to foster active engagement in the learning process, to nurture students' unique qualities, and to empower students to become self-directed individuals devoted to making a positive impact on their community, the country, and the world. And this is a vision that we worked on this summer. We wanted to make sure that our vision kind of aligned with the district's vision. And so our vision is, as a community, Thomas Paine Elementary School works collectively acquiring knowledge, developing skills, and building character while respecting cultural diversity and our individuality to achieve personal greatness, to lead to a more equitable society. One of the things I wanted to start off with is looking at, we have three goals. We have a literacy goal, we have a math goal this year, and we also have a social-emotional learning goal. And so I wanted to take a look at, or share with you after the last, well, the first presentation about beginning data, ending data, and the trajectory we're on. I wanted to share with you how our data, what our data demonstrated in the fall. And so the graph that you have, that you see in front of you there, you don't necessarily have a copy of that because I was responding to the need for the growth and/or the shifts. In the fall, our first graders who take Bass, kindergartners do not take Bass. And so it starts off with our first-grade data. We had 45% of our students who were at grade level in the fall. The yellow range is those, are those students who are one Bass level, below level. And the red is students who are two or more Bass levels or grade levels below grade. At second grade, we have 40% of our students at level, 35% of our students at level. For third grade and fourth grade, 49%, I'm sorry, 59% of our students at grade level. And then for fifth grade, 46 of our students were at grade level. Throughout the course of the year, receiving support, kindergarten began Bass in the winter. And so now we have data for our kindergarten. 33% last year were at level. 43% of our first graders were at level. 50% of our second graders were at grade level. 48% of our third graders were at grade level. 51% of our fourth graders and 42% of our fifth graders were at grade level. Some of the shifts occur because the, the academic rigor increases over time. One of the things that we did see is second grade and third grade were the grade levels that made the most growth. While one Bass level is not bad, it's still not at grade level, so we wanted to account for that. Either they made it or they didn't. So this year, our literacy goal is all students will demonstrate growth by being able to decode and comprehend grade-level text. One of the things as we analyzed our data, data we noticed is students were being held back from progressing to the next Bass level because they were not able to answer the comprehension questions. They may have been able to read fluently and decode the text well, but if they could not answer the comprehension questions, then they were not able to progress to the next Bass level. So this year, we wanted to make sure that we focus on comprehension. And as a part of that plan, one of the things that we, we've done is we've gone through some resources provided by the curriculum department to identify based on students' reading level, comprehension questions that would align with that. And so teachers are going to be using that during, in the classroom to give kids opportunity to practice answering appropriate comprehension questions so that it's not new for them once that testing comes around. Bass testing is given three times a year. And so we want to make sure that kids are exposed to the, the types of questions that they'll experiencing during the testing period as they would be outside of a testing period. Classroom teachers will be teaching guided reading groups every day. Another way to support our students in literacy development is to also, I'm going to be working with teachers during our RTI process to identify those students who are still struggling, identifying a dialogic reading strategy that we can use to support them, and also walk away from our RTI meetings with specific goals for helping move those students forward. Today, I also met with members of my school improvement team, and we've kind of identified ways that we can also support parents, and I'll share that with you as well. We're going to incorporate more collaborative and co-teaching models. That will begin at the primary level. So kindergarten through second grade, our title teachers will be pushing into the classroom to work with students at the same time classroom teachers are working with students. And so the model will be two teachers in the classroom. And so once the teacher's done working with that group, then the title teacher will work with that student so they're getting the double dose. And the opposite is while the teacher's working with the group, those same students can then go over and work with our title teachers again so that we can maximize that transition time and provide more instruction in a, a short period of time. We're going to be using ongoing formative assessments to collect our data that will inform and guide instruction. As a part of this, the students that we've identified that were identified as not at grade level, I'm asking and requesting teachers to do running records on those students twice a month so that we can keep track of where they are and how to help them move forward. We will be using the Words Their Way spelling inventory to identify those word patterns that students are having difficulties with or rhymes so that we can help support the development of decoding. One of the things I talked about a little bit was the idea of how we can support parents. And so one of the things I shared with teachers is, on the left side, what you'll see is what teachers are going to do, which just kind of focused on some of the things I've already talked to you about. But they will also provide parents with more specific information to support them at home with their students. Today, when I met with my school improvement team, one of the things we talked about is providing like questions in the newsletters that parents could use to engage their child in comprehensive conversations. Our FACE team leader will facilitate quarterly workshops for the parents to come and learn about how to support their child's literacy development. And another thing, this year, we subscribe to a newsletter called the S-MOR. I'm hoping this comes up. Okay. So this is an example of one of the S-MORS. So this is communicated with parents either through Dojo or a link is shared with them. And so it just kind of provides not only communication but some highlights of things that parents can do with their child at home. We want to keep parents informed about the character trait that we're focusing on each month, what's happening in the classroom in regards to reading, as well as how parents can engage their child in conversation. Because oftentimes, we know when, when the child comes home, parents may ask, so what did you do at school today? They say, nothing. Of course you did something today at school. So this gives parents talking points and ways to engage their child in what's happening in the classroom. This newsletter also includes what they're working on in writing. And so if a parent wants to talk to the student about writing, or they write a few things, or we can add, teachers can add some suggestions to parents. One of the other things I've talked to teachers about too is putting links in this that will support parents. Because Eureka Math is a very interesting math. And sometimes our parents need help with understanding how to explain the process of solving a problem. And so this link has a link to Khan Academy that kind of works through exactly how to solve a problem. It's not coming up. But Khan Academy is a tutorial site to show you exactly how to solve specific problems. And so we're, I'm asking teachers to include those kinds of information to support parents in assisting their child at home. Let's see if I can go back. Here's the newsletter again. Zern is another online system that we use for allowing students to practice specific concepts that are taught in the classroom. Another component of teachers' newsletters is including actually the monthly newsletter that I sent home. And so I try to also include helpful information. This year, our speech pathologist will also be including a section in the newsletter for the parents as well as our social worker. And that information that's going to be included by our social worker will also allow us to support parents in helping their child with self-regulation skills, which is one of our social-emotional goals. And so let's go back. This year, we included, I included a math goal. We did not focus a lot on math last year. And so one of the things we keep identifying is that students are not necessarily fluid in number sense. And so our math goal is to improve academic growth in math by applying number sense to accurately solve grade-level mathematical equations. And so the bullets just kind of identify what the teacher is going to focus on. Teachers will use guided math instruction to support learning, incorporate collaborative co-teaching model, and then use ongoing formative assessments to collect data that will inform or guide their instruction to meet the needs of the students. One of the things this year we decided to do is incorporate more of the exit tickets and use that as formative assessment, as well as work together as a team to identify opportunities for daily fact practice because that seems to be where things kind of fall apart. Ways that parents can support, teachers will, will provide parents with information regarding what their child should be doing at home to improve their mathematical knowledge. So for example, ways to practice the math facts. Something that's embedded into everyday things that we do rather than making it seem like a tedious task. Also, suggestions will be included in the S-MOR to highlight ways to promote mathematical concepts. And again, the assistance of our FACE leader to facilitate those quarterly workshops that will allow parents to come learn along with their child how to embed mathematical practices into things that they do. We recently had a garden night, and as a part of the garden night, some of the things that we talked about is like how you can bring mathematical concepts into cooking, measurements. There's a writing component to that as well with students making lists, writing out lists for grocery lists for parents, estimating how much items are going to cost on that list. So just things like that to incorporate what you're doing every day in class or learning how that applies to your real world. Another one of our goals is our social-emotional goal. And I wanted to start off by sharing the behavioral data from last year. It was a big focus for us last year to work on positive language and building students up. And so we refer to our students as scholars. And so I'm always referencing, referencing for students that you are scholar and Thomas Paine scholars are expected to do X, Y, Z. So not what they shouldn't do, but what we expect them to do and what it should look like. So last year, our average referrals per day, per month, if you see, August is the green line of last year, and this is August of this year's line. And then September, here's where we were. Our discipline data dropped almost half. And so that's one of the things that we're continuing to work on. One of the things that, and I really wish I had taken a picture at the time, students are actually using the language that we're using with them to support peers. There were two great examples that I can share. We have one student, a kindergarten student, who ended up having to go to a, a teacher partner. And then the teacher partner was a fourth-grade teacher. As the student was sitting in there pulling himself together, another student, one of the fourth-grade students, went over to talk to him. And he said, you know, what I can tell you is that if you are not at a green, he showed him actually the Zones of Regulations chart and talked to him about what each zone meant and let him know that he wasn't going to be able to go back to his class until he was at a green. I was like, wow, this is great. Another incident, incident, incident that occurred recently, five-year-olds, one of our kindergartners, he was a little upset and had to be brought out of the classroom. He felt like it was fun to run around the conference room. His brother was in the office taking a break at this time. And he asked me, he said, do you want my help? I'm like, sure, come on back. So he came over. I said, we're not going to chase him. And so what he had at that time was a fidget because he was taking a break. He reached out the fidget to see if his brother wanted it, and his brother was like, yeah. But he recognized, the five-year-old recognized that, uh, maybe this might be a trick. And so his brother just kind of stood firm and said, really, do you want it? And then he pushed out a chair. And so the five-year-old came and sat down. His brother went and sat in front of him. He handed him the fidget, and he said, you know, when you're at school, you're supposed to be safe, respectful, and responsible. And you're not doing that right now. And that just made me think about, and he's, he's new to our building. I've had to have a conversation with him about, we don't chase kids. You know, the expectation here at Thomas Paine is that we are safe, respectful, and responsible. And what does that look like? We recognize that sometimes students need breaks, and we're happy to provide those breaks. But the expectation is that they're in class and learning. And so to see him have a conversation with his little brother was just like, it's sinking in, you know, just a celebration. So our SEL goal is students will use appropriate strategies to self-regulate their behavior to be successful in the learning environment. And we're, we're going to continue to focus on the positive language to support students in building confidence and taking risks and bring out the scholarly person within. The other thing is teachers will engage students in second-step lessons. We're having class meetings every morning. And for those who needed work with them and supporting them on understanding the Zones of Regulations and what that means. The last thing, we have one of our team members who is interested in hosting a book study on conscious discipline. And so we currently have four people signed up for that book study. For this particular goal, we said teachers will provide parents with information about character traits each month. We're going to reinforce the expectations regarding expectations as well as empathy. We'll be using our S-MOR to highlight ways that families can support their child with SEL goals. And one of the things we've kind of talked a little bit about and did some planning for an event for our FACE leader is to coordinate a performance where students will actually either do some kind of performance, it hasn't been completely fleshed out, for their parents about the Zones of Regulations and what our expectations are. And so kids will actually have the opportunity to share, this is what our expectations are and how we regulate our emotions. Do you have questions for me?
Questions, board members?
Thank you for a really fascinating report. And the referral data, the drop in half the first two months of this year, you attribute it to the sort of just the switch to focusing on positive behavior versus largely is the reason why?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I mean, the sense that I get is when you tell students not to, of course, they're going to test the limits. So we tell them what we expect of them, and we hold them to that high standard and expect them to be there. One of the things that I continue to talk with some of our students about, particularly our fifth graders, is that you need to be the role models over at the middle school. We know what it looks like to sit down and have a restorative conversation and also conflict resolution conversations. And so I expect for you to be leading those discussions when you get over there. Like, and we talk a lot about having private conversation rather than putting yourself in situations where you have a crowd, which then can cause things to escalate to a level they don't need to go to. So.
Well, thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Other questions?
Board members? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're now ready for our action items, part of our agenda. On the consent agenda this evening are minutes of our... On the consent agenda this evening are minutes of August 21st, 2018, business meeting and our September 4th discussion. We have September bills and checks, education fund bills in the amount of $616,000, O and M bills, operations and maintenance fund bills in the amount of $330,000, transportation fund bills, a whopping $8.50, working cash bonds in the amount of $437,000, tort in the amount of $47,000, life safety levy in the amount of $45,000, payroll of $3.1 million, and adult education bills in the amount of $69,000. Excuse me. No interfund loans this evening. We do have various personnel items. Nothing that I believe anyone has any comments about. Purchase of replacement service vehicle, two trucks that seem like they're ready for replacement, and a resolution authorizing and directing the sale of excess property, which is a culling of some library books out of Wiley. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Yeah, Lori needs to hear who makes the, okay, we got it. You got it? All right. Roll call.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes, sorry.
Yes, sorry.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Poloski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Rollins Gay, President Dammott.
Yes, motion is approved. Next, we have individual action items. The first on the list are gifts. And the Dublin Street Church of Christ donated 65 new book bags to Urbana High School, valued at $600. And Altrusa International Champagne-Urbana Chapter donated a variety of school supplies to Dr. Williams and Thomas Paine Elementary Schools. Motion to accept the gifts and send thank you letters would be in order.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Next, we have the FY19 Adult Education Budget Resolution. It is before you. What is your pleasure?
I move approval of the final 2018-19 budget, Adult Education Budget.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. This is in concert with what we discussed at the last meeting. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Poloski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Rollins Gay and President Dammott.
Yes, motion is carried. Next is our FY19 District Budget Resolution. Once again, a motion would be in order.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Once, this is a minor change from the budget that was presented to us, but just minor changes. I had various questions with the budget. Lori, Carol knows that, but my concerns have been primarily addressed. It's simply, I want to make sure that we're all aware that we have to pay some close attention to funds that are in the negative, and one in particular, O and M significantly in the negative. And so we need to, and Carol has assured me that she's working on some ideas to bring forth a strategy for how to resolve that. There are two other funds that are also in the negative. IMRF and transportation. Any further discussion? Okay, when we get done with this vote, every board member has to sign this resolution indicating which direction you voted. So roll call.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Poloski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Rollins Gay and President Dammott.
Yes. Motion carried. We do have a special executive session on Monday, the September 24th, at 6:00 p.m., and it is for the purpose of discussing specific personnel issues. There'll be no action items as a result of that meeting, so we just announce them. We are ready for superintendent's report.
So I have just one FOIA to report on, and that is Josh Fine from HBO. I'm sorry. There we go. One FOIA to report on, Josh Fine from HBO.
As in the television?
As in the television network. I believe, we did not ask, but I believe from talking to other superintendents who received the same FOIA that they're doing some research work for some kind of documentary on high school football. The question was, how many boys played high school football, and what percent of them received free or reduced lunch for the years 2017, 2012, 2007, 2002, and 1997? So five-year increments going back 20 years or so, 25 years. And so that's the FOIA. A couple of things on superintendent's report here, real quickly. First is, I would just like to make a statement about something that I emailed out to the middle school staff, and then Joe forwarded out to his parents. Our entire community values the safety and security of our schools and our children. Urbana School District is working with Urbana Police and the City of Urbana to reduce gun violence in many different ways. We are asking for the support of our larger community. Over the weekend, the east side of Urbana Middle School was damaged by what appears to be gunshots. A window and an exterior wall were damaged, and Urbana Police confirmed that they received call reporting sounds like gunshots at 1:00 a.m. on September 16th, 2018, from a resident on Vine Street. After investigating, Urbana Police informed myself and others in the school district that they do not believe that there was an intended target. They also do not believe that someone was actively shooting at the school for vandalism, that these were stray shots. That is just as concerning and just as disturbing. We have notified teachers and families. We urge everyone to be cautious and aware of their surroundings at all times. We ask that anyone who has information, please contact Urbana Police at (217) 384-2320. And anonymous tips may also be submitted to Champagne County Crime Stoppers by phoning them at (217) 373-8477, or online at www.373tips.com. That's one. Number two, and I'm glad that Ms. Vowles is still in the audience, because one thing that she failed to notify the board in her school improvement report, I have a feeling because this wasn't really a school improvement-related thing, but it is definitely a kudo and commendation, was that there's an upcoming early childhood conference, annual state conference, in September, and Urbana Early Childhood School was chosen as an off-site location for a networking event, specifically to tour Accelerate Gold Circle Early Childhood Center. And as of last week, there were over 365 administrators who signed up for this event. Now, that causes some logistical things, and so Ms. Vowles did reach out to our neighbor across Wright Street and asked if we could maybe co-host. We will be having close to 200 administrators from across the state at early childhood on September 25th. It's in the evening. We will send out more information to board members as that comes up, but it is part of a state-level conference. And again, it's pretty exciting that, one, Urbana was chosen, and, two, that so many people signed up specifically for this networking event when they heard that it was Urbana Early Childhood School that was going to be recognized. The other thing that I just want to bring to the attention of the board, there are a number of things on the agenda that are as upcoming calendar events. Many of them are opportunities for board members to engage with the community. Many of them are celebrations. There's one coming up this weekend, which I will be pushing out information through social media and other platforms, which is the Yankee Ridge Grand Opening and dedication of the new Yankee Ridge Gym as the Nancy Thies-Marshall Gym. Nancy Thies-Marshall will be here this weekend, and she will actually be visiting Yankee Ridge School on Thursday with students, and then on Friday with staff. She'll also be there present during the grand opening and kind of tour. It's an open house, but at 4:00, at 3:45, there will be a small dedication of a work of art from Mr. Seth Fine, who is a Urbana graduate and Yankee Ridge graduate in the library at Yankee Ridge, the Margaret Dees Library, and that is in honor of Mr. Fine's librarian, Ms. Dorothy Baker Shelley. And then at 4:00, we will be gathering everyone in the new gymnasium and saying a few words, introducing Nancy Thies-Marshall, and essentially having a grand opening and naming ceremony for the gymnasium. So that's this Saturday, September 22nd, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m., with the specific items starting at 3:45 in the library and 4:00 in the gymnasium. The other thing I wanted to point out was the change in homecoming time. The homecoming football game will be at 4:00 or 5:00 p.m. on the Friday, October, not October, September 28th. We will have the parade. I'm sorry, there's one other thing I was going to put in there, which is Thursday, the 27th, Walk is Won at Ivanhoe Estates. You'll be receiving more information about that via email. And then Friday, Homecoming Parade is at 3:00. We're going to do, host a family social and kind of informational session about involvement in the strategic planning process at 4:30, and then the homecoming game kickoff is at 5:00. So we hope to see a lot of people at the middle school and high school campus that Friday, the 28th. And that's it for my homecoming, or for my homecoming report, my superintendent's report.
Questions to superintendent? If not, we're ready to go to board reports. Any board reports?
I just want to speak for Peggy and me both, just as a reminder. It only affects a few people in central office, but we're still conducting surveys as part of our superintendent evaluation process, so letters were sent out to those people who report to the superintendent, and the deadline is Friday, so if any of you are listening, please get your surveys in and make sure we meet the deadline, so we can keep the process moving. Thank you.
Any other board reports this evening? Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. We're adjourned.